All right, this is the budget work session for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Let's do the pleasurable legends.
Pleasurable legends to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just for all.
Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
There.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
Okay, this is a work session, so we only really have one item, and that is to discuss and review fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I'm assuming that everyone has had a one-on-one conversation with the city manager to discuss the budget, and you already have your concerns or don't. So I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Reeffler and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'm gonna just run through some of the things, yes, we did, everyone, the councilmembers I've met with one-on-one, went through carefully the budget, and I just wanna bring up some of the main things that we talked about. First covering our, what we have, our estimated increase in property value for this year. It came back on close to June first, when it was released, it was at ten point four-one percent. So in comparison to the previous year, the actual was ten point four-three percent, and then the year before that was our peak that we've seen recently, which is the fourteen point one-zero percent. So this is the estimated, July first, we will get the actual, and again, we don't expect it to be more than a percent off, it's very critically close. So right now, our current mileage rate, consistent mileage rate of feds is twenty-twelve, is the two point zero eight nine four, and with that percent of property value increase, we're looking to an additional revenue to the, to the city, a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. So again, it's a good thing that we're seeing an increase of property value, but you know, we don't know how it's gonna be in the future years, but they think that they lead. We go through, one thing I would point out in our, our finance department is we had the thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the auditing services for this coming year. The audit committee has the, has made recommendations, which will be at the next council meeting, but that does fall within our, our planned budget, so if we do end up approving at the council meeting this firm, the first year will cost us thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars, so we're there much about that. The only thing that could change, which we do not expect, is if for some reason we had to do a single audit, that would be an additional cost of two thousand three hundred dollars. I don't think we will qualify for a single audit because they recently raised the amount of government funding that they received to over a million dollars, which is a lot in the name of our size of budget, so we don't anticipate that. Another thing coming up is our legal contract for city attorney. This past budget year, we had seventy-six thousand dollars budgeted for legal services, a lot of that was for the charter revision that we anticipated. Our current retainer is three thousand dollars per month, which equates to the thirty-six thousand dollars per year, the rest of that is budgeted for outside of retainer. The retainer basically covers our, our regular meetings and regular city business. I have the contract, and I guess you guys have the copies to review, just to familiarize yourself with how we're billed and when we go through renegotiating this contract for in the future. But I believe with our current budget, which I dropped out the, the charter revision piece of it, so I put in sixty-one thousand, but that's a sick number to put in there for whatever we end up with our, as far as contract negotiations, and that should be coming up in April twenty-fifth.
I have a question about that. All of these ordinance changes that we are doing, where we can, they're gonna be sometime after October, so that's gonna put us into this budget year. How much, how much do you think that we're gonna be charged in excess? Run those through, because that's, that's quite a bit.
It is quite a bit. Most of the work I am trying to get completed by our planner, which is Mr. Serna, and that is a different line item, which was the other professional services that we increased in our budget this year. Randy will have some part in, in drafting those ordinances, hopefully they're pretty near completion, I'd like to get them all written and get it entered for the end of this budget year, because I did a budget that last year, so that's my point. We saw that the law enforcement services, we're looking at a seven percent change, increase. One idea that came in, and I'm gonna contact the chief of police over at Largo Police Department, see if they'd be interested in, at least giving us proposals for the police secret services, we'll see how that number comes in.
Kyle, while you're on that, I brought up about getting so much money back from the Bel Air shores, but we don't have some, we never got, we never given the time allotted that the sheriff spent. And I, we're going to a lot of their council meetings, I hear the issue thirty, thirty's like the minimum ticket stay issue just in the parking lots during lunch, each ticket takes a while to write. I don't know how much we were subsidized in there, police, times.
I did ask the captain, Captain Meyer, to, to work with the finance department over there, see if they could give me some kind of calculations to understand how to do it. I know it all is solely based on time, but if you did write down the time, it's an hour and twenty minutes a day, but there may be other factors, I'll wait and hear about it.
Right, and I don't believe it's anywhere below, I believe it's almost double.
So I guess when I get this, I'll send them on the council. Okay.
Let me chime in on the, the increase. I wrote a nice letter to the gentleman that, that sent us the bad news, the increases, and I told him that we had a huge increase last year, we had a hu, we're getting a huge increase this year, and it comes to the tune of about fifteen percent over two years. Kyle got a call from Captain Meyer, and the same evening, I got a call from the sheriff, called Terry to call me, and he informed me that this is not just a Bel Air Beach increase, it's the same increase over the entire county, and it's basically, the reason why we got hit last year was because they had to raise pay to stay competitive, to keep losing, to keep from losing officers to Pasco and Hillsboro. But this year, it's insurance and then more pay increases, and that's why he's having to, to do what they're doing. So I, I thought we were getting picked on, and, and I was pretty mad about it whenever I wrote the letter, but I was actually kinda impressed while he called me, and, but I did at the same time, I spoke with Woody Brown in Largo, and I asked him if he would consider doing services for us, and I said, I can't guarantee that we would actually get through with that, but it would be nice to have a quote, so we could actually see if, if there's even, you know, if they're even in the ballpark, as far as the sheriffs department goes, and what they're charging us, or are they undercharging us, or, you know, I, I would just like to see what, you know, so.
Maybe. So how did he respond, if they did that, would they have to hire additional?
I'm sure they would, I'm sure they would. But, you know, I told him, I said, I'll see your card right here all the time, so it's not really that much farther. The only difference is, is that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't become three directions, Largo would only be across the bridge, and they would be coming in and out, so, but.
Aren't their officers paid more?
I don't know if they are or not. I, I just, I thought it would be a good exercise to see if we could get a quote, if they're, if they would even entertain dealing, they may have already heard of, about us and don't wanna deal with Bel Air Beach.
How about Clearwater, since Sam, you and Rick, just, you?
I have not spoken with Clearwater, I just thought Largo would be good, and I knew that also, that there's been some apprehension about us having any business interactions with the city of Clearwater in the past, so I chose Largo to see if they would be interested.
Well, I'm not complaining, I'm not complaining about the increase, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, I think we have the best deputies in Largo. I've never heard any of our citizens complaining about any of them, they're always there for you, they're always saying, I'm just complaining about, I don't think we're getting fair share, we're sharing the budget, you know, despite what we give back from the shores, I think that should be looked at.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm just flipping through about the, it'd be on page sixteen, this actually is not in the draft, this came during my meeting with Member Roberts, and we, you know, he's interested in looking at some of the, the work order software, public works software that you can use, that has a lot of options and a lot of benefits, and we, he did some research, and he came up with one called iWork, and we demoed it, which was great, but we sat through about an hour, went through the basic package, saw all the options that were available, we included our public works administrator, Aaron, in as well, where we asked a lot of questions, and we were very impressed where the software is today, it all runs off of the web browser, it's a lot different than it used to be when I was over in City Bolzmar, and you had to run on your own server, so. It also is very impressive because you can tailor it to your city's size and everything that you do, so that, there's a lot of variables, when you create recorded forms, or you can create the fields specifically for what you use, and not anything more, that was never a thing in the past, it was kinda like you had certain options, and they were all on your forms. The same thing with reports, which was impressive, the ability to just create a mass out of reports depending on what, what the data in question is. And, you know, after doing the demo, definitely saw a lot of benefits, but we didn't have the price yet, and then later that day, the proposal was sent over, and it came back very, very reasonable price for, it's, it's set up where you have a startup fee to build the program, they do it in sixty days, their forebears worked directly, you, they use our maintenance plan as they start building our galleries and our fields with that, and then we tweak it as we went. But again, you know, I was very impressed, it has the annual cost, for the basic package is two thousand two hundred dollars, that's just the yearly cost, and then, and add-on.
Is that for users?
No, that is for the entire program, no unlimited users, and I, my intention would be that every staff member, all eight of us use this program, it's kinda like our central work order program, because we're all kinda directly involved, whether it's, you know, intaking the calls, or, you know, assigning the work and approval of the work, so we would all have access. And then there's a, there's an add-on package, which is a stormwater package that applies to us, because it's our main utility, that's a, that's a fourteen-hundred dollar a year cost, so the yearly cost, we're looking at three thousand six hundred dollars a year. But again, with the stormwater add-on, you know, we do our required permitting through the state, and we have to track through forms and spreadsheets, all of this data anyways, and it is part of our regular maintenance, but what we, what we do is we build our, our existing GIS that we have, our stormwater system, into the database, but we, we do, we run all our inspections, our work orders, our valve checks through this program, obviously keeping track of staff time, keeping track of costs of the materials, and also the, the parts, and the, just the inventory in general, the things that we keep on hand, just tracking the maintenance of our equipment, so kinda everything ties into this, is my main point, in that as we go, when we're assigning, you know, what the, the cost per employee is, cost of time, cost of materials, all this will be tracked, which will be very useful, especially when it comes to kinda keeping, keeping track and showing where our, our time, our, you know, productive time is going, so that we can pull this up and kinda see, you know, what these costs are, and furthermore, down the road, when we're looking at our stormwater system, because we know we're constantly doing repairs, I would, I mean, so much time to it, we'll be able to generate reports that show, you know, where that money is going. So I just, I just think this is the, this is the future, a lot of cities have already kinda implemented these type of programs, I think they're getting to the point where, you know, they're very affordable.
You know, you're currently tracking all this in spreadsheets?
More or less, and, you know, I mean, a lot of our communication is just, it's coming in through phone calls, it's going to me, and then I'm funneling it to where it needs to go. A lot of times, unless it's a, it's a routine thing, they would go to Aaron directly, but.
I'm talking about the, like, asset management, appreciation.
So our asset, so if you're talking about our equipment, that's just a separate spreadsheet where we keep a track of the miles, the hours, the time, the last maintenance, a lot of times you gotta go pull up last invoice to get more information, it's not exactly a smooth system, but we are tracking it more or less.
And this software does all that for you?
It builds it all in one.
Would you say the amount of labor that you're, and I wouldn't say wasted, but using, to do all these functions now, is it easily six thousand dollars or more a year?
Oh, the labor to?
To track all of it.
What you're saying? I would say when, yes, because you're gonna benefit from, once we all get used to using the system, they're no longer filling out paper reports. I think the real benefit is when there's a question about specifically how much money we're spending on this or that, and it's gonna be there, and we're gonna be able to pull information on it, so in time, it's gonna become more and more valuable.
Now, you said you got this software, or they, you were able to talk them down to six thousand, that's probably a first-year rate?
So the startup right now is six, and what I mentioned was, you know, our purchasing procedures, if anything over five thousand dollars, it's better when time, we have to get a second quote, and he said, well, what's the threshold for that, because I may be a little worried, and I said, five thousand dollars, so he said, well then, you know, if you guys seriously are considering it, then we'll get a lower that number for startup.
Now, will we be required to get a quote if he raises the rate next year?
For the, for the annual rate, we're looking at, this is a three-year contract, so the block.
That's three years, three years.
Yes.
That was my next question.
So after that, we'll see what we're at.
How do the employees feel?
Well, we talk to them.
Not, not yet, no.
She's very good at organizing computers. But no, Aaron brought the idea to staff afterwards, and they were excited about it, because we did present it as a way, we know that they're working hard, and we know that they're doing a lot of different things, and we saw it as, as the validation to what they're doing.
No, I'm just saying, change sometimes is hard to accept, you know, in the world.
Sure.
This is something that the employees want.
And Councilmember Roberts, you, you reviewed it also?
Yes.
How do you feel?
I, I think it's great, you know, when Kyle asked me initially, what did he think the ballpark was for the cost, I said, well, I put down like ten thousand, and it came in, the number of piles it referenced, it was, was really attractive, in fact, the guy's willing to get it under five, so that we could, and he, I think he even mentioned to you, Kyle, that they would actually start it now, if we wanted to, and so get it in sixty days, it would be actually operational, even though our budget wouldn't be until October one, and he was like paying in till, so.
We'll fill this later, I'm sorry, just wanted to ask you.
Just buy my software.
And it was, I told that, I said, a lot of, when you see like, how many users do they have, I think they have like twenty-five hundred across the country, so they have an annual users meeting, which, from my experience, that's invaluable, because you, you go to that annual event, you have an opportunity to ask people questions that have been through some of the learning curve, and share information with them, and say, you know, we're thinking about doing this, and they go, oh, don't do that, we tried that, it didn't work well, or whatever the case may be, and there's some local, I think it was Port Ritchie, has it, so I think it's a good fit.
I, I don't wanna go down a huge rabbit hole about the software, but I did, where's the data being backed up?
In the cloud.
In the cloud, and service, which is still what the federal government.
Okay, and is there opportunity for you to actually download that software, or the backup?
Yes, and anytime we decide to leave, they will get, you know, they get even sixty days, but they will provide all that information back to us, our information.
And what if they just close their doors one day?
That would be sad.
I'm waiting for the cloud to rain.
Yeah, well.
You know, clown.
I don't have a problem with cloud software, what I have a problem with is all the data being only in the cloud, because things can happen, we saw it with Amazon Web Services specifically, so it's, it's a good question to ask, but.
Maybe I can ask for, if they could provide data so often that we at least can keep it before it's gonna crash, or.
Right, something like that.
On his question about what happens if they go, we haven't really been in business.
Hmm, I don't, I don't.
Because the way this works anymore is they, they develop it, they go in, they excel it, they say, hurt us, help us.
I guess the final fact is twenty-five hundred of the customers, that doesn't have any money.
That's true.
Yeah, and I mean, I feel like everything that they're gonna import in, that we already have existing, is gonna come in in the form of, you know, a spreadsheet or a column of eliminated, eliminated values, so, yeah, there's always a chance that they could be bought out or changed, but it's really, with today's technology, you know, that we'd be a little fiver over it, one layer in, over it, through the software.
Okay, and the only other question is, or what I'd like to know is, what's their uptime policy?
Twenty, two thousand, one, you said.
It's just something to find out, their uptime policy. Most, most people have an uptime policy, whenever their software is a service, and that's, that's important, because the last thing you wanna know is that, well, they're in India, and they do all their maintenance while you're open for business.
Okay.
They're not.
Okay.
And there's usually a plan, so that if there's a problem, they're gonna, this type of problem, they're gonna respond in X time, but if it's a different level of problem, you respond in another period.
Okay, Monday through Friday, six a.m. to five p.m. standard time.
This is more.
Okay. And what was the other thing?
They usually have performance standards, so if there are outages, it defines how quickly they'll respond.
Okay.
You said you're early to five a.m.
Two hours ahead.
Yeah. Okay. What else?
So getting to the capital part of the operating budget, I added a thirty thousand dollar budget for about full of our holiday lighting. This would be to, I, I understand at some point, we did have light up on the main building, whole lighting, I don't know how long ago that was that we could have it, that's why we have plugs on some of the poles, primarily on the main streets. So we had, currently, we have existing nineteen, they were pretty consistent all the way to get to twenty-fifth, and then there's a big gap, so part of this expense would be to have enough holiday decorations that we have, you know, every major street up, and then when we get up to here, where we get the gaps, we just keep that safe distance.
I'm assuming we'll be presented with those decorations to vote on?
Oh, yeah, so this is just to have it in the budget, but yeah, we definitely have it, you guys said that.
Well, you don't have anything going forward, like maintenance or anybody, pretty, you know what I'm saying?
I can talk to them, I know they say they have, or any of their rocks, and see how much replacement they're doing. I can tell you right now that the Christmas tree, and actually, they start.
You haven't had any replacement, not for five years now?
Except for whenever I don't hit the button.
Real quick, on this partial budget, I'm, I'm taking out the patrol vault that we had in there, I'm gonna leave that out, it's in the draft, but I don't think we did at this point in time. As far as capital projects, we're saving on the same, same amounts of plan, most of this stuff is, you know, HVAC roof replacement, you have the bridge repairs, the bridge replacement, we're saving for that in the long run. One thing to note is, we're still saving for street resurfacing, because we used everything up to this year in our current projects, so we're starting to save for whatever we're gonna need resurfacing next. We have money in the bridge lighting replacement, I actually, for the first time, expense that account for repair, but that, that's really kind of a piece of money, if you have a muscle and you gotta put lights that we melt down, even back up before we collect any kind of reimbursement. But yeah, again, same, same savings program, and then as we need replacement, whether it's a seawall or fishing dock, that will be in immediate disposal. The Marina budget, we're, right now, we saw our last increase per foot in twenty-twenty-three, and our final increase per resolution being twenty-twenty-five, April first. Right now, you know, kinda keeping everything working, making repairs as we have to, but, you know, kinda status quo. And then stormwater budget, we, again, we're collecting the same stormwater assessment fees, and, you know, again, repairing pipes as they become compromised, we're taking care of a lot of our piping in this project, of every decent pipe, just because we know if we fitted it out, at one day, that we really gave up the price. But, you know, there's always things coming up, there's always cleanings to be done, and as we have money, I'd like to continue to purchase, you know, the backhoe to prevent check valves, because there's, are some areas where we see these real high three-point-six pipes, where we do see a lot, a lot of different trains, not as bad as ones we've already done, but it's still a thing, so I also like the fact that when we put them in, it prevents the particles and likesters from getting into pipes, so it helps us in the long run of doing the maintenance.
We, we collect a flag for, have we ever looked at Lake Mill, that generate more money? This, you know, we're talking about pumps and everything like that.
Would be considered, I think when they modeled the original assessment, they just, we'll, we'll let the consultant, if I can, start it on something.
And where do the Ninth Street improvements come in, this budget or the current budget?
So the Ninth Street pump project, right now, is, would come out of reserves, you know, we don't have, right now, the design and the plan, I mean, we could. I mean, we could, we kind of have an idea of what the number would be if we wanted to get in our next year's budget, if we can do that.
I think it would be good to have an R.
I think we'll be closer to that number, especially if we get, you know, August, you know. But yeah, I'll add something for now. Place holder. That's all.
That's it? Did anyone have any changes or recommendations that are not in this draft budget? I think the only thing I saw really was that we were looking into the attorney contract.
Yes.
We were going to possibly look into price shopping for police services. And you will move the boat. You know, just going to try and sneak that in there again.
The boat's still in there, wasn't it?
Yeah.
There's one tiny I know that I'd just like to comment on, and I committed a trial to this for the library charges.
Oh, yes.
Yes, because I, I'll just state for the record that I was offended, incensed, irritated when I learned that Bel Air Beach had increased the cost for library cards. And I, this is a pretty fundamental service that a, that a modern-day civilization officer people. And so I'm glad that we're taking care of that. And I will say too, when I first moved here and I found out about how they were doing the library, I thought, how smart is that? We're too small of a town to support your own library. So go next door, get a card, come back, and we'll reimburse you. And I thought, great, well, you pay for only the people that ask for it, you don't have a special assessment for it, and you allow people to educate themselves. And when I, I just thought it was so petty when people started playing around with that reimbursement. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Have you been talking to my wife?
What did we change?
So on non-departmental, 519, it's on page 12, 519-0810, Library Services. We had budgeted $2,500, we bumped it up to 5,000. The actual for 2023 budget was 2,150. It's really just, at one point, we dropped it from a full reimbursement of $100 and ran by half reimbursement, with the thought that people were getting cards, they weren't using them. But I can tell you right now, we never really saw a major fall off. We just got a lot of people that were really not.
They were having a big breakdown.
That did like the fact that we weren't reimbursing the full thing. So I added it in here just from getting resident comments to go back to full reimbursement. Huge chunk of money, but I don't see it skyrocketing just because people can get a library card. It's something, you got to go down there, you got to get registered, they got to come here. You're not really going to do that most frequently.
It's a beautiful library. Oh, and they charge $100 a year. And I think it's a little excessive. I mean, now, they said you can join, but it would cost us.
To join the club, it was way higher. I have a number somewhere from last year, but it doesn't make sense.
My, my little bitty town in Illinois, it was a $400 a year assessment for the library 15 years ago.
Mine was free.
Mine was too.
Yeah, and now you went in there, showed the resident city, and they gave you a card. Was it coming with taxes?
Yeah, but I mean.
There's a line on the tax form.
So that's a 200, that's a $8,400 a year taxes.
I'm just saying, if we pay 100, I mean, my wife and my daughter, they each paid 100, you know, before. I just think that's a little steep. Of course, when they're using someone else's library, too. Oh, it's a, a book, it's a beautiful library, the whole thing is gorgeous to me.
It's four books.
Yeah.
Kyle, what's next? On the, what's the next date?
Oh, next day, so we got a regular meeting coming up. And then the next budget workshop is going to be July 15.
July the what?
Fifteen, sorry.
All right, now we're on to general business. Unfinished business. Would anyone like to go home?
I just had a comment, so I'll just take them account. I will not be here for beginning of July, November 10. That's what's on this next council meeting. But we're still three strong, so that works, right?
Yes, it does, Charlie. So. Any other comments?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, let's go home, everyone.